Ready to go. All right, I'll call a meeting to order. Sorry that we paused a few delays with our technology, but we're doing best we can here. So anyway, we'll rise to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll hall.
Trusty Brits?
Here.
Trusty Dom?
Here.
Trusty Thomas? Yes. Trusty Campbell? Yes. Trusty Eaton?
Here.
Present. Everyone is here, so we can skip three, two, and go right on to four O. Public comments. Anyone care to make a comment?
There is no one.
No one? Okay. On business, review of regular meeting agenda items for December 21st. Anyone have anything they'd like to discuss from that? Any upcoming meetings?
Yeah, I know. So would we just address for the natural resources? It was just for the wildlife resource center, right? Or was it all was because? So last time for the first reading, I would read it seemed like there was more in the packet. And so then when I'm working on my agenda this time, it just said the wildlife resource center. So I had a few questions, but they were more related to the other parts. So and if we're not doing that, that's fine. So let me explain, we're going through chapters. And so last time we were one step ahead of our natural resource management policy. That was going ahead of the wildlife resource chapters. So we've already finished second, thirteen on that. And right, and tonight you are on. The you have a first reading of you have the second reading of wildlife, right? We already approved the natural resources. They fall right after one another. And then when it's all done, everything will be complete. But we're just taking it because it's a lot of material and taking it at once. I just, that's why we broke it out. So if in fact of a policy that we've already approved through second reading, if there are changes or you want to have a discussion, we're welcome to have those conversations. If it's something that's just a scribbler there or something that we need to modify. Again, open to that. If you need to bring one of the policies back or keep the conversation, we can do that as well. If there was section or but the board moved all those forward last. Yeah, no, not at all. I mean, there was nothing there changed for that time, okay? There's a lot of information. And then tonight, for even though it's on the consent agendas for first reading, we have them broken out for discussion, the comprehensive policy manual for chapters one and four. And I want to talk about personnel policy manual for first reading this month too. So that's again, the consent agenda, but we're going to talk about it in detail. Okay. Tonight. So there's our reason to go through that. What you guys have to say and then we can answer my questions. That's what I've gotten confused about whether or not I need to jump on it now. Otherwise, we go to consent agenda and then we can separate. So I will just do everything. I pulled those out like I've done prior, just because I expect there to be conversation. And I don't want to assume that, you know, it's just a swing down.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to review? Five, two, update on Glacial Park building demolition. Tesla and Lemon, fifty, John Kramer.
Well, I go ahead.
I guess also Amy, this is also on.
She is, yeah. So I should I take it and then other questions? And then we can kind of, if we need additional from John and Amy, we can ask them to join us here. So the project update, as they got into reviewing and preparing, the board had authorized to go to bid it back in October. And as they were preparing, they were bringing out utility agencies to come out. And so they could do statistics for that. And in the work back, if there were several maps that they put together and they learned a lot. What they learned is that it's what I would call a tangled mess out there. In essence, of where the main supply comes in was the electrical, which is on the building, the football building that is to come down. They've got septic, they've got sewer. It was known of that this is going to cause some particular issues with stormwater management because of the wetland area. Some of that is on the football building. And so what we, when it was brought forward and they looked at it all, we had a meeting as staff. And the thought was before we're investing additional dollars, we really need to get some additional questions. If it's going to be a temporary relocation on some of these things, once we get with the county, unless we give them except for variance, you're looking at new sewer, new water. And ideally, the long-term vision down on the valley floor is at some day in time, those buildings will no longer be there, right? But but we need time, staff needs time to be able to go into a little bit deeper dive of some scenarios and costing, which then we can bring back to the board. So tonight, we wanted to update you with that. And we have talked with the Dharma, we've notified them that we need some additional time, that there are some complications. As we go forward and we look at the pricing, we will send that over to them. I don't know that they will provide any additional coverage on this, that they were going to pay for the demolition. The football building does have a shared wall with the ranger shop that's there, okay? And so how, which came first, but they have got with one another. And so there is going to be some challenges of how we mediate that. And in our plan, there was also the thought process of raising the intern house that was down there. There are some things that feed that. The communications to the lost family visitor center go up the area through line of sight. So again, there's many different things to have to work through. So I think our team will be able to do that. So we're making you aware tonight. We'll come back to you the goal with the holidays and January being the budget. And we're right after the first year of February is probably the best realistic date. And the Dharma was okay with that. For safety, we've also boarded up before I just had a tape barrier and sign in. We now gone ahead and closed, you know, so there is no access of concern that was a concern. Not that anybody would go back that way, but someone was seeing it from perspective to make sure that that was in order. So I believe we have the safety protocols. We will come back in February and I guess answer any additional questions. Or Amy or John, if I missed anything on this high level. Please feel free to go ahead. Any questions from the board?
So you're looking at a few months before we know it and before it even goes out for bid.
Correct, yes. And and will we able to look at the scope and understand what other challenges that we have and make a recommendation?
I see in the budget, you have like $160,000 budget, I think it was.
For demo?
Yeah, for demo that. But anyway, it seemed like that was less than what the number was. Well, I guess we just said that we would take the money that we received and then we put that in the budget for the demo. Maybe that fell somewhere else. Anyway, I think $160,000. So is that still a number we're working with or did we not really have a number that we are competent in?
Well, until we did it and we get how we want to work towards that, we'll know we'll get reimbursement, which is not part of the dollars that were given on the value of the football building, the price of us. And then the Dharma will pay us for raising that building. And then I don't know what that number they gave us an estimate. And then based on this new information, I don't know if they'll cover, you know, the local utilities or what that's going to cover.
So they never got back to you on that?
The Dharma does not hit, they can't till they give them something, they can't really react or respond to that. They appreciated us letting them know.
I didn't know who was something in their policy that yes, we do that kind of thing, no, we don't.
Yeah, they were open ended on it until they know more about it, they can't really.
Well, just the idea of long term versus, you know, intermediate terms. And demolition is in the short term. And then if eventually they're going to be wanting to move those structures off of this space, obviously, the staff needs time to give the board description of what, how you do that in a staged way. But the idea of any dollars we spend now, we would want to get a long-term benefit from rather than just put a Band-Aid on it and have to deal with it in ten years. But so anyhow, I think the delay to get a really comprehensive picture of what the options are and what their costs are over time is well worth the time it takes.
And that's what we want to do because we do have another building on Parks Road that's up towards the road. And we talked in concept that if we were to take things out of the valley floor, could that building be repurposed? And then what would need to happen there? And or is that partially, and then you'd have to construct? And again, this is all a lot of white, and I'm not saying, but you know, again, do you put if if you have to put a new sector and you have to spend money, we'll have to do a positive investment to your point. Is it worth doing that short term? Or is it worth just, you know, to just relocate altogether? But it becomes, we'll be able to figure some of that in some high level, more details, better numbers for you.
Was already planned and all in place before about moving or relocating it? Or were we, other than not saying we'd like to do this someday, is that all it was?
It was just a conceptual and Amy and John, we can speak to that. I think there's been discussion at some point, the valley floor would be open. And then you could avoid the service road and then obviously avoid the morbidity of the wildlife that's on the back road here. And, you know, right now that is an area of concern. We've got all the other real good traffic. So again, we're in a good position, but that would have to also, I would assume, be a phased approach because of the process associated with that, right? So.
John, do you have any idea, did you have any thoughts on that or anything on your end of it? What you think could happen?
Let me make sure he's. We have done mute on here because of last time disappearing.
Yeah, so President Henning, the this concept has been around for, I mean, I know that it's been discussed since the time that the Lost Valley Visitor Center was opened, which was 2011, I think. And that was, you know, the view shed down there. But, you know, we really didn't see the impetus to, or the, you know, the need to do something like it, you know, and, you know, at that time. And so it's always been on sort of a horizon, a long-term idea. But it rises to the forefront when you start looking at the total cost of a building down there. You know, just as, you know, just as an example, we know the thing needs siding, the building, a building down there needs siding, the shop needs siding, it needs a roof. You know, we know there are suspect, as Elizabeth had pointed out, there are suspect issues with septic and water and things like that. So when you start putting all those in and to, you know, trustee Cook's point, you start looking at the long term, you need to start asking that question. Is it worth investing into these structures down there? Or is it time to cut bait and go fish elsewhere? So that's really what we're looking at in this case.
What would be left there after we took down the intern house, the football building? And I believe there was another one. What would be left in that location? Just the shop, would that be it?
Yeah. That'll be part. Oh, is that the bit?
And would the barn stay no matter what? Or is that something that should go down?
No, it's habitat and.
That's what I'm asking. So if it's habitat, is that going to stay no matter what? And what's going to happen to that? Anybody have a comment on that?
Let me unmute, add here.
And do you have a thought on that?
Yeah. Can you, am I able to be heard okay?
I see we can.
Okay. The number of bats in the barn has dramatically declined with onset of white no syndrome. And where we used to have a thousand bats in the barn, we're down to under a hundred. So there could come conceivably a time in the near future where it's no longer utilized for bad habitat, or those numbers could start to rebound. But the trend the last few years has been downward. So I would not say that that will be bad habitat forever. A lot depends on what the prognosis with that disease turns out to be nationwide.
But for now, you would leave it in case they rebound and that's.
Yeah, we've had threatened and endangered bats utilize the barn over the years. And the numbers were very impressive. At one time, they were well over a thousand. There does seem to be some recent data that says that there's, that some bats are showing some immunity to it. And then some treatments have been developed. So I think that the jury is still out on what's going to happen in the long term.
We also had discussion at one point, again, timing and seasonality of it. And wildlife experts can speak to this, that there is a way to transition if in fact we can successfully get them to relocate. But that's a process itself and I've got a study.
Well, okay, and my point is, is that if we're getting down to the only building left is the shop, and the shop needs a lot of work, where it sounds, if it needs a roof and it needs an siding, that doesn't leave much left. And oh, it sounds like if we could repurpose another building somewhere else, that would be feasible and more place that, you know, we'd like to have it versus here and all that, put any money in that building.
Um, so you say that there's a wetlands, you know, in there. And in the sense, the buildings are in there, what do you mean by that? And what, what are the constraints there? I mean, I understand getting, you know, activity out of the valley floor, and I'm all for that. I'm just wondering what you mean by that. Because we already have the footprint, so. Well, it was a pre-existing condition. So now when we start to modify the stormwater ordinance, it's going to be. Oh, I got it. So Amy, she may be able to speak to the high level. But but there are some things that will be required if we started adjusting, must be replaced. The permitting process, the variants of sorts. Okay. And that would be able to be what we want to be doing, right? But based on best practice and what is appropriate. Amy, anything else to add? Sorry, Tim.
No, high level, you did great. You know, we'll, we'll be taking down some of the pervious surface, the asphalt. And, you know, the footprint will be restoring. So we'll get comp storage, you know, credits for that. The, some of the utilities that we will have to reconfigure though, that will be impacted a little bit. And so again, yeah, if we can get, the more we can get out of a floodplain, the better. Obviously, any opportunity that we can to do that, it's better for everyone.
I was thinking, thinking the building on will be an improvement. Okay. All right, well, I guess we were looking forward to see what, what staff comes up with.
We'll be back.
All right, thank you. All right, budget presentation. Who's leading Andy or?
I think I am, yes.
But Andy.
Fairly brief presentation. Can you hear me? Okay.
Very good.
Let's see. So do you see a single slide? Or do you see two?
Present review.
You do see the present review?
Yes.
See if I can fix that. Well, let's do this.
I guess if you go back into it and then put the fully settings, it should allow you to switch screen.
Locked up. Well. Have a different way.
I'd have to just flip my monitors around here real quick.
While you're doing that, let me just, I'll go to high level, Andy, on this and then. What we're hoping for tonight is a discussion. We'll go through Randy's presentation. If we're getting, I need some board pull up for everybody to consider. And then our goal is to package this up. We need January dates up a week, again, accommodate schedules. And so the second week of January, we've got a meeting planned for the Monday, the 10th. And then that Thursday, on a Thursday night, will be the regular meeting. We'll pass the tentative budget and put it on review. So any changes, unless they're minor tonight, we're hopeful that we can make those between the tentative and the final, just because of all the schedules and the thing we have to do behind the scenes to make everything flow and leave right. But tonight, if there's anything you see or care or concerns, then we want to be able to have that conversation. We've got our heart for workers, so. Ready, Andy?
I was. Hit one too many buttons here.
We just put it up before everyone.
So now you're looking at one slide?
Yes. Yeah.
Sorry about that. So the preliminary tentative budget is based on largely the draft we showed, presented to the board back in July. And then the directives related to those discussions, we've obviously incorporated into the this draft that's in front of you today. The focus again is on the general fund. Again, that's the heart and soul, the operations of the district. And I'll spend just a little bit of time, most of it's going to be just on the changes from what we showed you in July. But I did want to just review the property tax revenues because it's obviously so critical to what we do. Again, we've seen this pie chart every year. It hasn't changed much from July. The property lease, the farm lease income we're showing in this draft is slightly higher. So the property leases went from 13% to 14% as a total percentage of revenue. And then just as a reminder, to look at the property tax revenue in the general fund, we were allowed to take the 1.4% CPI increase from 2020, carry it forward plus some new development. And so the total PTO aggregate levy we're looking at, increasing the 21 levy buy is just that $157,000 or 1.9% over the prior year. And as a reminder, that'll be, if this holds true, that'll be only the third time in a decade that the district's captured the full PTO levy. And those are shown in these dark green bars, so 15, 16, and then 21. Even last year, if you remember, we only captured two thirds of what we could have captured last year. And as we forfeit those tax revenues and we roll this forward to 2021, we can see the total amount of tax revenue that we've given up over the last decade is almost seven and a half million dollars. But really, even more importantly, is that $1,184,000 that just got highlighted. We have a annual, an increased annual property tax capacity of a million two. So every year, we could actually, had we taken what we could have under the PTO, we have an additional $1.2 million that we could levy for operations. So then looking at the property leases, so we are here in July, the December 22 core was at 503, actually. And we presented three scenarios to the board. We showed the revenue with corn at 415, 458, and $5. And you could see the $36,000 that negative represents. If it was at 415, we'd have total farm lease revenue of 36,000 less than we had in budgeted fiscal year '22. And then it increases 59, 160 grand. Looking at corn today, it's moved up quite a bit. So the, when I did this about three days ago, the December futures are at 552. September corn was actually at 565. It's down a little bit now, but it's still over 540. So what we've incorporated into this budget in front of you is corn at five and a quarter. Again, that's still probably, it's 40 cents less than where it is today, or a good 30 cents less than where it is today. And it brings in an additional $220,000 over the '22 budget, or about 60,000 more than what we showed you in July. And that's really the biggest change, really the only real change on the revenue side. So this is the budget fiscal year '22 versus what we presented in July for all the summary of the basic revenues. And it shows a percentage change from that July presentation to the budget '22, both in percent and dollars. You could see we're rejecting a 3.4% total revenue increase or 322,000 over budget '22. And now with the, if you look at the property taxes, they're unchanged, that's still the 2%. But the farm lease revenues going from $150,000 increase to 209. So again, about $60,000 of additional revenue over what we had in July. And the other runners are relatively unchanged because of about $2,000. That's just additional interest income. We'll back that up once. So we're showing a total revenue increase for 23 of $384,000 or 4% over budget '22. And then looking at the personnel expenses, so when we were here in July, I had the CPI for the calendar year through June, I believe it was. The title says May, but I think I was able to capture it through June at the time. It was 4.3%. Taking that through November 30th calendar year, it's 6.7%. December doesn't look like it's going to fall off any. And that would be determine the levy increase now then for '22. But obviously, you know, those are inflationary costs. We're absorbing this calendar year in '21. And we'll take those on plus more in '22. We had presented assumed a 3% wage increase with the July draft, both for the non-contractual non-bargaining, as well as increasing the salary grades by 3%. After the discussion with the board, we reduced that down to 2%. On the seasonals, we had increased the starting wage from 12 to 13 bucks an hour. I had a total cost near 239. So again, remember, in July, we hadn't distributed the budgets to the department managers yet. So this is just me taking the total seasonal cost from the prior fiscal year, growing it to get to that 13 bucks an hour. It was 239. Now, the draft in front of you has the actual managers' budgets. And we're actually increasing the seasonal starting wage from to 13 and $15 an hour. So to be competitive, to make sure that we can get some seasonal workers in here, there will be quite a few of them starting at $15 an hour. In fact, most of them, that'll be the case. The total cost we're showing on the draft in front of you is actually going down to $206,000 from 239. And that's directly result of managers reducing the number of seasonals. And then the 150 bargaining, their contract ends in March of '22. So we're starting that negotiation process. But they do, the current contract has me too language. So we had a 3% form in July, we have 2% form in this. And then the FOP files their contract with a 2% annual increase. As you remember, in July, we presented an assumed 4% health insurance increase. And then we worked with IPBC to get some estimates. And the high side net increase would be 7.6%. So we're hopeful it'll be less than that. But we've incorporated this net increase of 7.6 into the tentative draft in front of you. This 1,6,949, 10% increase, that's what we showed in July. And so now we add on the additional $33,000 to bring up that net premium increase to 13.7%. And we talked about that in November, too, when the board approved the cost sharing for district staff. We know the IMRF rate contribute. We know the IMRF rate contributions is going down more than ten percent, so there's an actual decrease here over year of forty thousand dollars. And then as, as we look at first, is there a question? Okay, I heard somebody, probably a kid. So this is what we showed in July, we had the total personnel expenses going up three point nine percent or two hundred ninety thousand dollars. And now this draft in front of you, we show wages only growing two point two percent versus a three point seven. The retirements going down three point four percent or thirty five thousand dollars, again, that's the IMRF required contribution rate reduction. And then lastly, the employee insurance going up year over year, a hundred twenty six thousand dollars versus what we showed in July, that one oh one. So we show personnel expenses growing two point eight percent or two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And then as you look at the total expense of personnel as a percentage of total operating expense, we're actually showing that going down now. You can see it was seventy eight point one percent fiscal twenty two with these reductions that actually falls slightly to seventy eight percent. In the July draft, we were showing that actually increasing a little bit. Under the other operating expenses again, for the July projections that I did, I just took all the lines grew three percent. Other than some particular line items like fuel and legal, where I knew there things were going to be a little bit higher, I adjusted those accordingly. The directive we gave to the managers after coming out of the July planning session was they needed to hold their budgets flat again. So most of the line items, I should, I should say in total, the department operating budgets, you know, will not grow. And again, we've allowed some exceptions for things like fuel, legal, other line items where they know they had to grow. That's a big difference, obviously, growing everything by three percent and basically holding most of it flat. So as we look at that, in July, we showed the total operating expenses, other operating non personnel, non capital growing by four point two percent or eighty seven thousand. In this draft in front of you now, it's only a one point six percent increase of thirty two grand. And this chart, the blue line shows the actual budgeted other operating expenditures for each year from fourteen to twenty three fiscal year twenty three. And the green shows how those budgets would have grown if they had been allowed to increase by the CPI. And you can see there as you look to twenty fiscal year twenty three, there's almost an eight hundred thousand dollar difference. To the blue actual budget for twenty three versus where it could have been, had we grown these under the CPI increase each year. And then looking at the capital, this is just the changes now from what we gave you in July in the details, I'm not putting it all up here, but just the things that change. The total office furniture went down, went up a little bit, four hundred sixty two. I had a server in here at eighty five hundred, the actual expense of that is going to be much less, it won't be capitalized even, so we're backing that all from the capital listing altogether. Let's see. The big ones, we have three plows that have been added on, they weren't included in job till in the July draft, so that's twenty four thousand or eight thousand dollars a piece. They added a attachment for the flail mower with a hydraulic arm, that's fifteen thousand. So those are the two big ones that were added, so you see the total equipment growing, increasing by forty five thousand dollars over the July. Presentation. Under sites and building improvements, we didn't have any of these in the July draft. So we have a Hebrew and trail recap that'll be funded out of the general fund of twenty seven thousand bucks, Brookdale alarmed, mechanic shops replacing the concrete. So a total increase there of forty one thousand dollars. And then in our vehicles and trailers, we've actually reduced the the expected cost of the two vehicles that we did have in the July draft. By three thousand, eight thousand dollars and we added the third vehicle, which is the facility maintenance vehicle that was totaled earlier in the year. So we obviously need to replace that, we didn't have it in the July version of it. So we see a total increase in this preliminary draft of a hundred and eight thousand dollars of capital versus what we had proposed in July.
Obviously the pickup, you got some for the old one that got in the rack.
Yeah.
So it's not going to cost forty two thousand dollars.
So a good point, but the actual cost will be, you know, if we sell that at all, it depends if we saw it, if solely is on auction, it would come in as revenue. If it's actually, you know, traded in, which we typically don't do, I don't believe, then it would actually reduce the cost of it. But if it sold at auction, that would just come in as revenue, we'd still have the full cost of the truck.
I mean, if it was, you got a check order.
What's that? Yeah, right, so that's a another good point, so again, the forty two thousand is correct then, it'll be the total cost that we'll have to pay in fiscal year twenty three to replace the truck.
Revenue in this year, I get, and we'll get the.
But, but even if that revenue matched in twenty three, we'd still have to appropriate the full expense.
We have two, we have two different transactions.
Right. Under fund accounting, we're not allowed to offset that, we have to show that. Insurance reimbursement as a revenue.
One other question.
Someplace in the program, there was discussion of skid loaders and attachments. And I'm sure you're going to get to that and whether it's going to be included or not.
Well, absolutely.
Go ahead.
And I was gonna say, you had in your packet, it was not included because it came out, it wasn't discussed earlier, we had suspended it as a staff. Which you would see in July and then the request came, is this it all been packaged up? Because there was a repair and so then I asked the natural team to answer some questions so that we could have a conversation. They are hopeful that this is a critical piece of equipment that they need. And they would like to have authorization to include it in the budget. And again, I didn't ask the question, since some of our vehicles and capital were going to end up to year end with dollars available. But we could not even, we're not to give, it's very unlikely that we would think that equipment if the board was agreeable for the end of this fiscal year. So it would be appropriate if the board is agreeable to include it in next year's budget. And if there were any questions about that, I know Ed or Brad could bother going more specific about the importance and why that piece of equipment is key to their work.
Agreed to do that. Does how does that alter the capital? Budget that we're.
The prime mover is, and that's what I pulled up, these are all the items that were requested back in July that we showed the board as deferred or suspended deferred meaning. We'd anticipate doing it in a future suspended meaning probably wouldn't happen anytime soon, if at all. So the item you're talking about is that ninety two thousand dollar prime mover. Obviously, if we decided to incorporate in the budget, it would just increase the capital outlays by ninety two thousand.
And the skid steer was that?
That was a prime mover, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what they're calling it. They're calling it skid steer with cash.
So facility mains had asked for a skid steer too, and that again was deferred. And that's not, you know, being re-presented now, it's not being reconsidered, I think the one that's under reconsideration is the one for land preservation, natural resources.
That's correct.
One other question, so they're getting two motorcycles, the motorcycles that they're getting.
No, it's deferred.
Deferred.
I just, I'm sorry.
So there were items at the executive team level that we decided to make a decision and not move it forward.
Well, they're just trying to suggest moving the prime mover off the.
Correct, and primarily it had been deferred over other years as well and because as we report the frequency of the repairs and the cost. At some point, you know, it's not working, it's ineffective, and so that is the recommendation that move forward. The reason why we show it is we want to be very transparent with the board to know where things are being deferred and what is being requested by staff. And then the decisions that are being made by us. But this is now, again, they've built the questions, they can answer, they answered several of them, of you know, what the costs were, how it's increased over the last several years, et cetera. Is working right now from my understanding, it is applicable?
Yep.
But you have the value of what the used one would be?
We do not have the value of what a used one would be. But what we did do a couple of years ago, and we did some more research to answer the questions that were brought up. Is we looked at the use of used equipment. And, and there are several reasons why in the case of this particular kind of piece of equipment, it's not necessarily the best choice. And part of it is this is a heavy duty piece of equipment that that takes a lot of use. It has an average lifespan in the business of about eight years. So if we were to purchase a used one, it would have gone through the same type of use that we do it. Also, we would need to, staff would need to look at each one that was offered in a bid. Because just like with a used vehicle, you want to see what kind of condition it's in. That would involve some traveling around, depending on where they were offered from. If we rent and every time we bring it into the field, we have mobilization cost from the rental place. And also, we lose control of being able to move that piece of equipment out into the field at the most appropriate time to use it. For example, some of these places we can only get into in the winter time when it's frozen. And it's hard to predict when those conditions are going to be just right. Right now, if we have those conditions right, we can move a piece of equipment from the shop into the field. If those conditions begin to deteriorate, we can get it out of the field. When you're using rental equipment, you often wind up using that equipment because of the rental lease at, at less opportune times. Because you only have so much time to use it. They're a good investment, the one that we are, are asking to cycle out, we put close to three thousand hours on. At an average rate of about two hundred fifty dollars an hour for rental. And that skid steer alone is cleared over seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of brush in its lifetime. Brad, did you want to add anything, you were, you were day to day with this stuff?
I don't see Brad on.
Yep. I muted, hope. Yeah, so that I think the biggest advantage to buying new is we get a tremendous government discount. So the last cat skid steer we bought, we got a forty six thousand dollar government discount and then another six thousand dollar in store, if you will. Discount and you know, the big thing is, like I had mentioned, we really don't know how to evaluate fairly. Piece of equipment has two thousand dollars, one thousand dollars, how do you assign that? And how do you really assess how much wear and tear a used skid loader has, but when we buy.
This is a good conversation, but my question really was, what's worth the sell?
Yeah, you, that your question is, right, used. What's the trade in?
Yeah, what's ours?
They don't trade in when you did out.
Yeah, but what do you think, have you seen any used ones out there, I mean, this ninety two thousand is, you know, five, I mean, we're getting. Twenty five or thirty thousand for ours, or I was just wondering what kind of value ours has in it still. Maybe I assume we're not going to keep ours, if that's the case.
No, we would. We would, yeah, right.
Okay, so we would just sell out and we, we don't, I guess I forgot about that discount in there, so we get, how much did you say we get off of it for the government discount?
Because Western was a cat, maybe this will be a John.
Anyway, so, so we don't, we don't know what ours is worth, but I didn't know if you'd seen any on the market anywhere, had any idea what they've, what they've been bringing.
Hey John, I have not, I don't know Brad, if you've seen one lately?
Well, that's a whole nother thing, is this equipment right now, actually for the last probably year is. It's actually going for way above what people ever thought it would and it's extremely hard to find, so. The used market is difficult and I don't know that you could even go through a bid, it's usually by auction, so that would be a whole different set of parameters for us.
How's, how does ours look after all this, after the repairs and everything?
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry, it's a little gurgled.
After telling all the repairs, everything done to it, how does it look, does it look good and sound good?
Yeah, so the, the thing that's been happening, so we should have replaced it in two thousand nineteen, we've, since then, we've had. Progressively higher repair costs, so this last year was fifteen thousand. But the real problem is the last repair we did on it, it was over a month in the shop. And so, and there was twenty two repairs this year alone, so if you figure, you know, that one was a month, but they're typically two to three days. Minimum and we're doing most of the repair work ourselves, we're not even taking it in. So it's taking staff time and that machine is not out in the field, so that's what's really costing us is our staff efficiency. By not having equipment that's up to speed, but it's the, it's the undercarriage, the bogey wheels, if you will. And hydraulic hoses, and then now it's into electronics, prayed wires, so it's, we're seeing that aging equipment. Slowly break down and again, when you're mulching and using forestry package on it, that's where it receives a lot of wear and tear. It's off road and it's, we're basically mulching up trees and that's, that's heavy duty work on those machines.
Okay, what brand is that?
Yeah, what is the random, the one we have or the one we're looking at?
One we have.
The one we have, what brand is it?
Oh, we have, we have two Terraxs, those are the old machines, two thousand and eleven and two thousand twelve, and the new one, we got nineteen, was a cat. And we got the Terraxs because they have a really, a good wide track and they're all somewhat equivalent, of course, they're all somewhat different too. But it's a good machine, but they actually changed, they don't make Terrax, I think it's, I'm going to lose it, I can't remember what it is. But there's a slightly different machine now, so we would still have to go out to bid and bid for certain specifications, certain PSI in the track, certain horsepower. You know, make sure it can have a universal attachments, that type of thing. And then, yeah, I guess one other thing, if we have to make sure it's safely, you can get out front or the back.
And the side too, if you go to JZD. But my question too is availability, I mean, we're seeing, you know, equipment new and used, all real.
Yep, you know, I did talk to the cat salesman last, I guess it was this week or last week. And they're building them, so you order them and they build them, so you know, we would have to say, hey, we're, we budgeted for it and they would have to take that risk. But he said it's about a three month lead time. And so that would work within our bid process and, and same thing with the mulchers, they're, they're building them, they're sending them over, so if you order one, they're going to have it. So it's not a, right now, it's not a year long thing, it's, you know, three months out.
What kind of mulcher are you looking at there?
Well, we, we used the FAE before, but Seppi makes a good mulcher. Vicon, so there's, there's, and those things, they're, they're, they're good, but now we, instead, I think I, in the memo, did say. The three prong versus five prong hy- hydraulic, so now they're all going to this variable rate, variable flow, so high flow and standard flow. So even our mulcher is becoming obsolete, the, the old one, but we could still get a new one, we'll make sure it's all compatible. But there's, there's a lot of good ones, FAP, FAE, Seppi, Vicon, there's others as well.
Yeah, we have Vicon and they've seen.
Yeah.
This is, so this reflects the after the government discount, right?
Yeah, the, the, the price that we, we put down is with the government discount, so like that cat would go for a hundred and thirty something. And actually, we got the last one for eighty two, but there has been increases since, you know, for a couple of years, so we, we don't want to come up short, so we always put a little bit extra. Just to make sure it accounts for any cost increases, but that is with the government discount.
Questions?
No, do we need a consensus as far as putting that on the broad?
Or to include it, to move it into the budget and something like this, and Andy could speak, I think the goal would be that we go into the final budget. We would make some notes, so as the plan goes forward with some high level adjustments of what it would be the bottom line.
Then too, there's two more of those ounces. They want to buy two mulchers.
Right, Brad, you want the, is the Terrax or the replacement of the prime mover as well as the, the mulcher pieces? Go on, those are adds as well?
Yeah, we would want to get one prime mover and then two mulchers and then the two mulchers would go on the two prime movers. And then we still have an, an older Terrax and mulcher that we could use hopefully for a few more years. So again, we want to, ideally, we would have three and we would always be able to, you know, one would go back north, south, but one would stay north, one would stay south. And that would give us the most flexibility and the most ability to get things done.
The two mulchers were already, Andy, correct me, they, they were already included to be paid for out of fiscal year twenty twenty three, we are including them.
Yeah, yeah, they were funded, I, I'd switch and pull that page of the budget up, I'm afraid I'd lose the presentation, so. I'm, right now, I'm just showing things that are changed from the July version.
On page forty nine of the, of the worksheet, there it is in there. On the second tier under minutes of foot, at the last two one. On the, on the second tier, under maintenance equipment, at the last two one X.
I just have one comment, so you need three, you need three mulchers. Three skid loaders and three mulchers, is what you're saying?
Yeah, with our, with our six ecologists who operate them. And, you know, again, they, they can work in the savannas or the woodlands and the prairies for fire breaks. We take them out in the wetlands. And there's always, you know, one being used in the region, if we get into a bigger project, then we will have two there, sometimes we'll have three there. So yeah, absolutely, we've had, we've had three for the last, I'm gonna say, well, probably fifteen years at least. And it's worked out really well for keeping our staff going all the time.
Uh, one of those three that we had, we actually were able to leverage for free. Uh, and we, we cycled that one out. And we get an awful lot of use of it over, what we say, Brad, at least seven or eight years, right?
Yeah, for some reason, I think that was a two thousand seven that Bobcat you're referring to, so we had it quite, quite a while.
One last comment, I'm a farmer, and so. Hours that you guys use stuff versus like a construction person or somebody that. We, we probably, you know, put three times as many hours on it here. Well, that type of work though. Well, you're right, I, I understand that, yeah. It's a lot harder than, it's like, you know, taxing it all the time.
I, I think that, that, that's a, that's a great point. Um, when you look at straight hours of equipment, you might, you might be moved to think, well, that's not that many hours. Um, but you're right, when you start to look at the type of work that it does, I mean, you're going to realize that those are, those are difficult hours on that kind of machinery. And a lot of what it goes through, uh, we're dealing with rocks, we're dealing with, you know, hidden fence posts, we're dealing with extremely hard and dense wood. So the wear and tear on them is, is considerably more than it might be for, for typical use of those types of equipment.
Yeah, the one, the one comment I would make too is we actually got co, uh, the co-op to come in and spray an area for us. It wasn't a farm field, it was the area we work in, and they said, that's it, one time only, we're not coming back. So that's the kind of, you know, conditions we work in, just like Ed described. I mean, there's hummocks, there's frozen ground, there's a really tough terrain, and it, it does take a toll. And that's why that undercarriage, that's where it takes the most abuse, because it, you know, you're running into rocks, you're running into, um, sharp objects oftentimes. And he, he just out in the natural area, so it's, it's a tough working environment.
More questions?
Everybody's okay? Yeah, it sounds like we're all right.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, so the other big change on capital from the July draft is that we now have the reappropriation. So these are all items that are budgeted for this year. Um, there's a very good chance we won't get them in in fiscal year twenty two, so we're just reappropriating those items into the fiscal year twenty three. It's a total of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And this just shows the capital by year, uh, the brown beige bars, the total amount budgeted. The light blue is the amount funded from reserves, and then the green is the amount funded from revenue. So you can see at fiscal year twenty three, we got that little fifty thousand dollars of revenue now to work toward the capital. Um, and really, that, that four hundred thousand dollars is about where we should be in order to keep up from year to year. So the years we're not doing that, we're falling further behind. Uh, and then in summary, looking at the July presentation versus this tentative draft. Um, total revenues, we show growing up sixty one thousand forty six, more than we showed in July. Uh, the personnel, we told, total personnel expenditures going down seventy eight thousand from the July draft. The other operating going down fifty four thousand, so the total expenditures before capital going down a hundred and thirty two thousand. So in that second column, that's the summary of the July draft presentation, we had a net operating deficit of a hundred and forty three thousand. Um, so that meant a hundred, and that was before any capital. So the, that draft had a hundred and forty three thousand dollars of operating expenses being covered from reserves. Now, in this twenty three draft in front of you, we're showing an operating surplus of fifty thousand dollars. So all the operating expenses will cover, be covered from revenue. Uh, and additionally, we're using that fifty thousand dollars to fund some capital. And then you look at the total expenditures of fund balance, um, and again, in July, we show total expenditures of four hundred and ninety nine thousand. Versus a twenty two budget of six thirty, um, and now we're showing a total reserve spend of five hundred and forty, five hundred and fifty four thousand. But remember, a big piece of that is a hundred and forty thousand of reappropriations. So stuff from twenty two getting rolled forward, if you back that out, you know, then you'd be closer to four hundred thousand and significantly less than both the twenty two budget. And the July draft. And then just a couple slides in the dedicated accounts and camp funds. Um, this schedule is the three year camp that we presented to the board in September. Um, and it's kind of hard to see, but the total amount of the two schedules together, again, these are, you know, this is the schedule we presented to you. Total amount of the three year camp for fiscal year twenty three was one million four hundred and sixty thousand. Um, and then if you look at the total twenty three budgets for the camp fund and the dedicated, it's one million four hundred and eighty thousand, there's a difference of twenty thousand dollars. Um, and that difference is the planting, the funding needed for the planting at Coon, the required Coon Creek watershed changes. So again, it's based, you know, these two budgets together make up the three year camp plan as we presented it. The only other change, and this is every year, we have total land acquisition in this twenty three budget of one point, uh, one million dollars. The actual available land acquisition funding, as of November thirtieth, is only a hundred and sixty one thousand. So again, as we've gone in the last several years, we've budgeted an additional million dollars of revenue, seven hundred and fifty from grants, two hundred and fifty from donations. They're not identified, but it allows us to appropriate those funds should they come in during fiscal year twenty three. Um, would allow us to do land acquisitions, again, if dollars came in. And then in summary, the total budget expenditures then for all fund, we show growing four point six percent or one point two million dollars. Um, and then this shows the total reserve spend by fund. And the total reserve spend is one point two million dollars, which is actually quite a bit less than what we showed in twenty two. Um, and actually, you can go back with the last five years, and the, the budgeted reserve spend has been considerably more than that. Any questions, comments on that, otherwise, that's all I got.
You have a question, Andy, since we're. Let's do this, because we are, do you have any idea where we're gonna end up according on this fiscal year compared to budget?
I, I don't, other than obviously, there'll be a significant, um, surplus, budget surplus for sure. Whether or not there's an actual operating surplus, I think probably a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars of an actual operating surplus, but we budgeted a deficit. So, you know, I, I think we'll end up probably a half million to six hundred thousand dollars to the good. But, um, a lot of that could depend too on, you know, if vehicles come in, and that's a, one of the big chunks right now of the operating surplus is the vehicles haven't been procured yet.
Not had some staff at times.
Yeah, personnel is another big chunk of it.
And they'd be delayed too because of some grant timing of projects that was the, are the funds to specifically delay that too.
Well, my, one of my questions is, is there'll be dollars in money going forward from this year or next year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Andy, anyone else have any more questions?
So are we agreed on this? Discuss, but are we, is this where we're moving forward or?
This is where we're at until somebody brings something else.
Okay.
I mean, this is what's in front of us, and that's, and somebody says, okay, I'd like to discuss this, we can, whatever the topic would be, and then we can move forward from there. But in this, this, in front of us right now, but we aren't voting till January, I believe. So we've got, but they would prefer, we're talking about it be tonight or Tuesday night or Tuesday. So you can talk about it tonight, we can talk about it again on Tuesday if there's, you know, people have time to think about it. And you, I mean, it's not preferable, but even when it comes to vote in January, somebody has something they want to change their vote on, that's certainly. So you, so you vote, I think this is.
So, so I guess I was just kind of wondering about, because we went from staff and put forward, and I don't want to get into a few subjects, and I haven't, I haven't talked to anybody outside of the board. Put forward back in July a three percent net for wage increases, and I think that was done in part because that seemed to be the direction that other agencies were going with. Based on, uh, cost of living increases and people being concerned about retention of talent. And I know that the average, in, in what was discussed back in July, was the average was coming out about three percent. And I think in the meantime, um, the county has decided to go with the three percent for wage increase. Um, and in discussions with some town board members, the anticipation should be higher than that next year. So, um, I, I don't know that we were really kind of like, talked about to the point where we.
We haven't.
Right, okay, so, and, and, and not to put you on the spot, I just, I just don't want to let that go until January. And I think if we have an idea about it, if people are firm one way or the other, then, you know. Have that discussion, so.
So Andy, I, I'm sorry.
No, no, the only thing I was noticing is that, you know, we're going through the numbers, and I think that they've made some adjustments in terms of what was in there. And I, you know, I don't have anything in front of me, but at some point, we had, um, we were, there were, we were fifty thousand up. On, in terms of operating expenses, in other words, we weren't dipping in the reserves for operating at this point. We were, we still had fifty thousand, which was then going to the capital. Um, and when we talked, so that's one of the things I picked up in here with the chart, but I can't commit those numbers to memory. And then, um, the other thing being that I thought that the change between the two percent and the three percent was roughly around sixty thousand dollars.
I was just gonna ask Andy what, he knew the number of that, what the difference would be between two percent and three percent.
I thought it was about sixty, but he's on. And he's, you have the difference between the wages of the two percent to the.
He's trying to answer, but he knew the.
Oh, sorry, yeah, let's see.
It's about sixty five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
I think we've noted with just general hiring, like we talked about, since July, the market with retention and all of that has. Different size of our, our real life experience.
Discussion?
So, so the question is, we agreed on.
We didn't agree on it.
We didn't agree, but suggest.
And they had three percent originally in there, they can back down to two percent. Or whatever it is. So obviously. We've had some time from July till December now, so same how the, working, not working. And so are we buying over two point two, or are we winding over to three percent net since five hours ago?
Let me ask, have we lost employees strictly because of salary?
The individuals that have left us, and I'd have to go back and take a look, some have left for other positions or salary, I would say yes. Opportunities for advancement, um, you know, I guess my key is the, to maintain the team is not to get to the place where there's a mass exodus. Right, of the situation, because right now it is an employee driven market. I'd rather invest and retain and have happy, you know, making sure that, that we're, we're doing the right thing for our people during the time of economics. So that we don't lose that to, to, because we will be poets, we will be recruited. I mean, I do know that team members have had recruitment, um, there are some that are looking. Um, and they're looking for, you know, not sure if they've done it, so I think those are realities that are happening.
So Andy, it seems to me like the income or the expense or the revenue side of this lags further behind. So what kind of an increase would we look at, the possibility next year at this point in time? Is it like six percent or something like that that you'd see?
As of November, it'd be six point seven percent would be the CPI growth you could levy in twenty two. Um, so whatever happens in the month of December, which usually isn't a lot, yeah, it's, it's gonna be above six and a half percent, it might be closer to seven.
First, then the board would have to decide whether they wanted to raise the levy that much or not.
Right.
But the, the possibility of lots of, of more revenue next year is there if, uh, born.
But it's a price of quarrying goes down and some.
Right.
Yeah, I think you're gonna stay, not gonna be like that forever.
Yeah, so one of the difficulties, yeah, you're right, and one of the difficulties is that the CPI that we can capture lags behind what the employees are experiencing. And so they start to lose ground while we try to catch up. And when we made the decision to kind of keep the levy flat for a while, but then we're, the idea was to take it this year. And try to hold steady with our operations so that by the time we get to the point where we can take advantage of the revenue that will be available when the GL bonds are, are paid off. We're not having to start all over again, we have, you know, there's a cost to be training and, and, and getting back up to speed. So one of the things I thought we had talked about was not only would we be willing to drop down the reserves. I mean, how many months of reserves are we at now? I, I know we, at one point said, let's not go below three months, um, but where are we at in four months, are we at three?
Well, if you, if you include what's assigned to the camp, you're at closer to seven, right? But then we assign the three point one to the camp, um, and the way this twenty three budget is right now, it brings it down to the two months or sixteen percent. Um, but again, that's, you, you have that other three point one million of camp funding. So collectively, it's a total of seven months. And the idea is, you know, we're, we're not just managing the operations to get to, you know, a potential relief in two thousand twenty six. But we're also managing that capital spend, and that's why you see the total reserve spends considerably less in twenty three than if you look back on the last five years.
And because you're drawing on the campment, on the, the money that had been assigned to camp.
Yeah, to, to get to twenty six, to me, it's, it's all one big bucket, right? And so you're looking at all the priorities each month, each year.
Okay, and so part of it was, we would draw it on reserve, not just for capital, but if we had to, we were actually agreeable that if we dipped in a little bit, just the operations. Um, that that was going to be okay, assuming we didn't go below the two month, which Jeff always said was fine based on our experience. With both downturn and our ability to get going with pandemic, because we realized on the traffic factor, so we relied on source. But if, I mean, every year, we seem to end up having someone look over because there's a, there's some kind of staff. Chef, and we don't go and we hire right away, which saves us money over the course of those, whatever model it takes to get that place while we reassess. So I, I don't know, I'm, you know. I guess I'm definitely comfortable with that, we have the, it's still fifty thousand that has come out, that means that we're not, with the way it's currently laid out. We're not going to reserve for cap, for operating for the wages. You talk, take that fifty plus another fifteen or whatever. We might have some savings through something, you know, that we always have something that comes up or something gets delayed. I, I just don't think it's, I think it's within reason for what we have.
Well, what about this? I'm just a little concerned that, uh, what makes you bring, raise those salaries and then. Think of it a little bit smaller. Just throw.
I, I have, it's not totally off the subject, something will sound like it, but it's not. I, I have, it's not totally off the subject, it will sound like it, but it's not. What did you use for fuel costs, and I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm trying to figure out what all the variables are here, so I have some idea of how many dollars are going to be around there. So what, what did you, what did you plug in there for fuel costs, Andy, you must have taken so many gallons times a certain price. And I'm just trying to figure out how realistic it is to have any savings anywhere, or if we could be shocked with a higher price, or, you know, where we got. Ten, twenty thousand dollars to gain here or there. He's muted again. Sorry, Andy.
Sorry, I'm, I'm afraid it's gonna feedback, because the speaker I'm using is kind of loud. I'd have to go back and look, John, but I think we provided, I want to say a six or seven percent increase in the cost of fuel. But we had a surplus in the twenty-two budget, so you're not seeing a six or seven percent increase in the twenty-three total fuel cost versus twenty-two. But we costed it out to allow for a, a six or seven percent increase. I, I think we had three, well, I'd have to go back and look, you know, that was from wherever we were in July, so I did, whatever actual cost was in July. That's what I grew, Karen and I actually both do two separate kind of calculations of it, and then I bring the two together, and, and usually we're both pretty close on it.
Do you track how many gallons of fuel we use a year, and is it very consistent, or is it?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty consistent, we do, I'd have to go back and pull it up.
I was just wondering how many, you know, if you take the gallons we norm, it would be on an average over a five-year span. And you took those gallons, multiply them by whatever price you're projecting, I was just, you know, wondering what kind of price you had plugged in there, and what price is that today? Because it could be ten, twenty thousand dollar swing.
Either way, yeah, I mean, every time we've changed, we've, we used to go in and adjust the tentative, you know. Five years ago, fuel was moving a lot, so we would adjust the final budget in that last month, because all of a sudden fuel skyrocketed or fuel fell. But we never got it, we were always off, it always did the opposite as you got into the year, so it was just a way to predict it.
And buying and selling fuel on the futures then, in your own personal account.
Yeah, right.
Are you playing the corn market now, though?
Playing for what?
Corn market, are you, are you investing in the corn market now, now that you've been following it so close here?
No. I've, I've learned not to ever try and time the market.
And, and I'm not really asking into your personal life. I'll have a question.
We were down a number of full-time positions due to retirement and people moving on. Does our tentative budget fill all those positions? How many of them does it fill, and how many beyond that do we think we might fill in the next twelve months? In other words, what is your sort of prediction about the number of employees? And how, you know, how they're going to be paid and so forth.
Sure, so the budget reflects all the positions that we've had approval to leave them, so their, their budget for a full year. Right now, there are positions that are open that we just went through the restructuring. And we, we said we're going to just X amount of dollars in this year, and projected X amount of dollars of those costs going into next year's budget, but it is at the twelve months. On an annual basis, pre where we're at right now, you know, you've got a, a natural attrition process. That, that has been, and I'm at the top of my head, Jenny's not here, we were just looking at this number, it has increased over the last year. But we generally have a few positions that.
Yes, it's been around five, and in the last couple of years, it's pushing towards seven, it's like six and a half, the average. Which, it always surprised me that even prior to the last two years, we were turning over an average of five employees a year, and that, that's kind of consistent, too.
When those positions have vacated, natural process, we, you know, again, till we get things removed and the right pieces on the chessboard. We, we evaluate, you know, you have to kind of get everything together, go out, recruit. So that's where you end up with approximately three to six months before you got a qualified candidate, and so therefore that's where that.
Do you have any impression as you, you know, go through the hiring process, that people are turning you down? Because of the wage structure that we offer.
Yes. We offered the accounting assistant position to three people who all turned it down. And, and every time they offered it, we raised the starting, you know, we were way beyond what we ever would have considered as a starting wage three years ago. Or even a year ago, and, you know, and we finally brought somebody in, we, it was quite a bit more than the first person we offered the job to. And they all said, one, one of them was a great fit, really excited to be here, she went back to her boss, and they. Gave her about a fifteen or twenty percent wage increase to stay, and she came back and was, you know, really apologetic, but.
But, I mean, I find that interesting, of course, they would have to work with you, Andy, and maybe test.
Actually, actually, they have a buffer, they have Gene, so that's not, and I don't think, I'm not even allowed to sit in on the last interview, that's just Gene and Linda to take care of it.
That's all friendly, Andy, it was all, it was all lots of love.
But I, I'm gonna say that the Fed chairman has changed his tune. Regarding the significance of inflation or the possibility of duration, the duration of inflation. And so that gives me a little cover to say, you know, maybe we need to account to some degree. For the inflation that we're having, although in my experience, it's, it's a different type of inflation than. That I threw in, in the past, so Chris made at least the, threw the idea out that. If we were to raise, we're at two point two percent in the budget. And, and we had brought that down from three percent that we, you know, look at a number someplace between. Two point two and three, I could go along with that. I think, I think if we find that people are not coming to fill the positions that we have because of. Our salary isn't up to par, that's, that's a problem. I, I do think that there are a lot of moving pieces, you know, in this inflation. Supply, demand, COVID, and so forth, I think that. Technology demands that we continue to be efficient and productive. And the employees that we have. You know, called upon to generate more work if they want to. You know, keep moving forward, and I think that's, they have to, both to generate more work. They have all this powerful mechanical equipment and all of the internet and information processing equipment. So, you know, I'm sympathetic, on the other hand, I think. You know, you expect your workforce to be productive, and to be productive means. You know, you don't rest on your laurels, but. The long way of saying that I could see raising our salary structure. By some modest amount. In order to be competitive.
I know, in July, I, I spoke that I did think our revenues would be up enough to go any further than that, but I also. Everywhere I go, they're, they're raised by two point two or, or more, probably more. I, it's just a fact of life, I don't know, but it's, it's not, it's not gonna reflect very well on what our income is giving, and where we're at. I mean, again, we have to be competitive in the workforce also, so I, I'll be somewhere up there.
Yeah, no, no, I don't.
No, no, I'm fine, it's good.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, and I think that. Given what's out there and the increases that are being at different agencies, and the fact that it is difficult to get people with the rate that we're currently offering them. To me, three percent is a minimum in, in today's market, it is a worker's market. And there are places to go, and I do think that are, and I agree. Bill, I mean, no matter what, you have to keep proving yourself every year, and this work is just as hard. And people are not getting something simply because they, it's being done, so to speak. But I do think that staff has proven themselves time and time again, that they are worth what they get, and then some. And, and, and I, and I just mean this because, I mean, if you think about the fact that they're working right now very hard, and I just recently submitted. And it took a lot of work for Grant's proposal that would bring, if successful, would bring in six point two million dollars next year. That's a game changer, and these are, in, in, in the, in the amount of effort that went into doing that. And just to try to make that happen, and every year we get, we get something from their efforts at applying for grants and partnerships. And efficiencies and everything else, so, and, and I, and thank you, Andy, for that information, and I'm glad you guys looked that up in terms of vacancies every year. Or, every year we seem to have money left over from wages just because people are gone, or have left. And I didn't realize it was quite that high, but since I've been on the board, it just, right, it seems like there's always people going. And so that always created some kind of extra money available for wages, that if everyone stayed consistently, then yes, then it's very, very tight. But with that gap every year, we just, I, I just feel like it covers what we're trying to do.
Oh, the number of people that we have, we have eighty-some employees, and if the average person works thirty, thirty-five years, you should have two to three retirements every year. Just statistically, so, you know, just with that number of employees, you should have at least three, three retirements, I would think. So you're gonna hear that, that may change over just right there. And it takes us a few months to replace them, you're gonna have three, three vacancies for part of the year, that'd be on an average year.
Well, of course, it's, it's changing, we kind of, you did a, how many years, you know, zero and three, you know, three to four to seven. And there we're at, so we had a nice distribution, what we're seeing, though, in just the way the market and employee of, of those. The retention that we're able, or what we've retained our talent is because there's truly, one, it's a great workplace, the culture is, is great, and we're flexible. We do provide good health benefits and other things that are part of a work experience. But again, a very entrepreneurial through the board leadership and through what we've done as our team, and the passion of what we do. I think that, that's what keeps people here, but what we're seeing is the loyalty or years of service longevity. Is something that going forward, you're not necessarily going to be seeing.
I'm older than any industry.
One other related story, if you want to hear it. When, when the first two accounting assistants turned the position down, we were getting pretty nervous, so I called Robert Half Account Times. A national firm, and they, you know, place accounting people, we'd used them in the past, and within the first minute of the conversation, the person said, from Robert Half said. If you're looking to get somebody to come into your office five days a week, I don't have anybody to help you, I can end the conversation right now. And that just blew me away.
Yeah, remote is a mix for four days, ten-hour days, I was just, I pulled an article out, the trouble had, I was like, how do I get this? Should do a that, the five-hour one day, and then moving on, that look like, you know, I mean, it's just, how do you get it down?
Totally, totally, yeah.
We've been losing tropes of people too, remote, because my company is still. We, we are remote, but our ultimate goal is to be back in office, and there are a bunch of people that just got to deal with breaking into them these days.
Get resistance.
Yeah.
So are those people all finding a place to go to work remotely?
There are a bunch of companies that are moving towards that, and they're offering competitive salaries, or it's a lateral movement for them. And people are finding exactly what they want for the amount of money they want, or, you know, it's.
Well, they don't have the overhead of trying to help them and building, right?
I have a company downtown that, they, at least a downtown sky rise. A couple floors of it for their coworkers, they had, I think it was a, you know, ten-year lease with COVID. They got it a couple years before COVID, everybody's been working from home since then, and they, it was cheaper for them to have everybody work from home. And break their lease than to try to restaff and get everyone back into the office for the number of people that said that they were just.
So they opened the lease paid whatever the fee, whatever the fine was, and.
Yeah.
Cause for what reason, because they would have lost people?
A lot of, a lot of, a lot of people were saying that they did not want to, you know, go back into the office. So definitely changing landscape in the working world.
So there, I, I, Lynn is, I'm sure for the true percent, that's what I'm taking from her comments.
You're talking to.
Well, I, I think we're on the subject now, I don't really mind continuing on, is there? Anyone else that's with the three percent, or meeting it halfway, or we're this point in time, and that, nobody's, we're not voting on anything tonight. Other than trying to get a consensus so they can plug this in here, or does everybody want to just think about it till Tuesday night?
I think I, I would second Lynn's opinion of the three percent.
You find the three percent.
I think that's, in today's market, that's, that would be a minimum.
I'm good, yeah.
I mean, splitting hairs, I, I guess, you know, as long as we can make it work, three percent is a question. Linda, you have a comment yet, or you'd like to that's, that's fine, I'm not trying to do that on slide.
Well, I'm more towards pets, and some, if we were at two point two and three is the upper bid, and. I would. Two, six, two, seven, two, eight.
Well, you, you started, you know, were we talking twenty-five, thirty thousand, I mean, you know, pretty soon.
What I, what I'm trying to say, when I'm getting there.
You know, I, I.
I was looking at the fuel and everything else, is there could be a ten, twenty thousand dollar swing in any one direction, and that's all we're talking about here. Once we get between two point eight and three percent, or two point seven, three percent, we're starting to talk about ten, twenty thousand dollars, which. We may have that much carryover just from this year going into next year, and we may have that many people not be here. And to be honest with you, everybody I've tried to is at least three percent.
Well, in the spirit of Christmas, I'll go with three percent.
I, I, I mean, I, I know where you're at, I'm just saying that we're certainly talking about ten, twenty thousand dollars, and we, and when we get a budget of several million dollars.
Three, yeah, thirty thousand.
Yeah, is, is, we, we can't predict so many other things between them, we, we just won't fuel the pickup trucks or something for a month.
I think the overall message that's sent out there, I think that goes a lot of value to, and I would say that your employees and our team. They, they definitely, they, they work, and they've gone through years after years after years of holding back and giving in and doing things. And so that's been part of the core, but everything else around, and so I do have to advocate for the additional things that they take on to make the place better. To serve the residents, they could just, again, look for excellence, and excellence means they can come and just do their job and, and leave and, and not take the bad extra. But that's not, that's not the culture here, and so there is value. And I'm just trying to, I don't think there's any doubt that the people here at the district are not doing an excellent job. I don't think that's the point at all, in fact, I give them kudos, and I praise them, even if they don't hear me. In my, in my life somehow, I don't think that's the point at all. And I understand. Everybody, everybody misses, it is the culture of the world right now, and personally, I don't like it. But it is what it is.
Someday it'll change, it'll change.
And I'm not saying that they don't deserve it, because they do a hundred percent they deserve.
Then I think that being the case, as the board trustees, if that's what we feel, we give them a three percent, and then we've got to figure out from there how we make it work.
Yeah.
And then maybe something later on they could cut, or whatever you've got to do along the way, but if that's, if you feel you've got good people, and you think that's what the market is. And you feel that they deserve that money, then you, I think they need to do that, and then you need to. Continue to look at where you're gonna, depending on how things work out, what you do. I mean, I, that's totally opposite of what I said in July, if the world was changed, there's change.
But who's my staff? Not here, I'm not saying I see. Oh, my God. Moving around us, but no, I I appreciate that and I really appreciate your thoughtful discussion and understanding that and and I think we'll show a track record as we have in the past, but we'll figure out and and we'll end up, you know, and do not do so.
Consistent with what Linda said. And today, today, um, we don't lay people off in the public employment arena. And we don't cut sales. There's the expectation of uh an annual increase regardless of what the economy is doing and what other industries may be doing. If you're in the hospitality industry or something, well, you 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 might have gotten laid off. Or you look to the government to bail out the airlines or, you know, subsidize the restaurants or whatever it might be. As opposed to, you know, in the depression when you lost your job, you lost your job. There was no inflation because there was no money, no one was being paid. Today, we've sort of gone to the model of, well, the government has unlimited credit and we just need to turn on the faucet and get money out into people's pockets, they will spend it and we'll all benefit from it. And and so there's a certain reality to that, um. If you make it too easy, um, someday there'll be a reckoning. And it's not my, I'm not spitting off, you know, be the judge of when that's appropriate or not. But anyhow, I think, um, you know, we, my perspective, uh, two point two to three seems like a rational thing. At this point in time, we'll just have to see what the budget considerations are next year.
Um, can I make a one clarification? So the, when we show the total wages going up two per, two point two percent in this twenty three draft they have in front of you versus twenty two, then incorporated a two percent, we'll call it across the board, increase. Um, but there's other anomalies in there, ones being the four, seven, so when somebody hits their seven through the district, if they're not at the midpoint, we adjust them to the midpoint. So if we do a three percent across the board, you're not going to see a three percent year over year wage increase, you're going to see a probably a three point three percent. And I just want to point that out, so when we bring this to you in January, you don't go, wait a minute, we said three and this is three point three. And I I'm making that number up, but it'll be somewhere between three point two and three point four.
But you're still talking sixty five thousand dollars.
Uh, yes, yeah, eh, yeah, the, uh, you know, when I did that, there would just be the one percent, it might be seventy cause that four, seven is going to get pushed up a little tiny bit, but I don't see it any more than seventy.
Andy, the other thing, and again, another option right now, we had the grades moving at a rate of, at the same rate as the two percent, yes? So then we're proposing that the grades move at the three percent or the grades move differently?
Well, we run into issues when you start moving the wages and not the grades, especially when you're not really covering the cost of living. I mean, that's how you end up with your whole grade structure then falls way behind. Um, you know, if you had, if you had a five percent wage increase with a, you know, three percent cost of living, two percent merit, then you can consider not moving the grades the same amount, but when you're looking at a two or a three percent wage increase, which you you almost have to move the grades with it, I think.
So is it, so what is it, is it a three and a half, is it a four?
So what I, what we would do is the, we would incorporate a three percent across the board wage increase, right? So everybody that's not contractual, non bargaining and the one fifty people would all receive a three percent wage increase, no more, no less. It'd be exactly three percent off their twenty two fiscal, twenty two or calendar or uh twenty one wage. But what what'll happen when you look at the budget for twenty three and the total cost of wages, it'll be a little bit higher than that three percent. It'll be three point three, probably maybe three point four at the most. And and that's the way it is every year, so usually when I, you know, do a budget presentation, I'll actually reconcile and maybe you remember this where I say, okay, we gave a two percent wage increase, but this year wages actually year over year increased four percent. How is that? Well, we added two positions, um, you know, somebody came on at a higher than the person that laughed or vice versa. So we reconcile back to it, so this isn't new, it'll always be the case, it'll never come out exactly the amount of the wage increase, the total cost year over year.
It's never gonna come in less.
What's that? Not under, right, not under our structure, now you could say, do whatever you want, but don't increase the total wages in twenty three more than three percent over twenty two. And then we'd have to go back and figure out what that is, it's probably like a two point seven, you know, or two point six percent increase everybody would get. And then when you looked at budget to budget, you'd see that three percent.
Well, that's where Bill is now.
Gosh, I didn't, I hate to open my mouth, but.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, I do.
And I, in in in, cause I don't want to cause a problem, I mean, when I asked Andy what the estimate was, it was an estimate that was made back in July, so to it really wouldn't be completely fair on the spot to hold them to it when I, like the total dollar amount, like I thought, you know, when my recollection was it was sixty thousand, whatever. Right in that range, right? And it was an estimate, so I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot. And I do think that that was a great point, so it was good that Andy brought it up for clarification, so I'm just right there, so, um, so if everybody wants to have an actual dollar before saying anything, that's fine, but I just, that was not meant to put Andy on the spot, it was that was very much from last time around and he hasn't had time to give the exact.
Well, I think when we talked about last time, I just did it quick off the top of my head, but I actually ran the numbers thinking this might be a discussion tonight to figure out what that one percent would be picked up the IMR off the FICA and the other cost of it.
So is that a changer for everybody, anybody, you're re doing three percent? Ending up with a three point two or three percent actual cost to us, is that really? I mean, there's gonna be some people who get three percent raise and then they're gonna go get moved to the midpoint, so that's where your effort gets decided, right? This is already, good with the three percent across and we're in one of three, two or three, three or somewhere in there. I think that's where we're at, Andy.
Yeah, okay, good.
And then I think as Andy works the numbers, as we discussed on these two items, um, you know, we'll figure out some way to do a summary sheet and so is that in the tentative when it comes forth, but then unless we can find the time, it wouldn't be incorporated until the final number, in the final budget, right? But we'll see where we're, how we're.
Or we have anything else on budget that anybody wants to discuss? Not seeing anything, I assume that's a curve of the capital equipment and the wages, those discussions, right? Five, four, first reading amendments, personal personnel policy and procedural manual.
So we've got two first readings this evening and the first one is the personnel policy manual. Um, this is going through council, um, just to highlight and the answer. A lot of it still was upkeep and updating our vision, our values with the restructuring, the use of positions. Um, we did make a change um into clarification with our sergeants, which we removed, uh, that they were eligible of the exempt level two position because they were bargaining. Um, we added in the whistleblower's protection, which is on second reading, but incorporated that, so that follows not only in the comprehensive annual but also in the personnel policy annual. Um, holiday pay, uh, we did clarify holiday pay, um, again, we have uh several uh team members that normally would work um on the weekends. And so when you're trying to say when the holiday falls, not that they're getting extra, but they have more of like a floating holiday, so we clarified that language because every year, like for example, Wildlife Resource Center, um, you know, they work a forty hour work week, but with the holiday, when we designate a certain day, they're still coming in and then how are it calculated, so we clarified that. Um, we also then looked at our paid sick leave and did align the language that was in there under FMOA. And we did remove uh daughter in law and son in law and other relatives living within the household because FMOA is not provided for that and so that is something that's out of the policy as far as where someone's law for using a sick day. Um, we also then um clarified some language on paid vacation leave amount of time that employee can take off or modify from two weeks to ten days, it's just the language, um, of how it's calculated. And then we also, in the appendix, uh, we did have some changes under FMOA, eligible versus entitled. Um, updated uh the nondiscrimination, anti harassment, um, there were changes made to VESA. Uh, and again, adding in the whistleblower, convinced for sign off, so those are the personnel policy, high level changes, um, the copy we will provide is the spread bind. Um, without any questions. So that will be on the consent agenda for first reading and then we will bring it back again uh in January for a second reading and then that will be. And Andy did take a look at this, so I'll, but. And thank you Jenny for her assistance in helping me with that. Um, the other we have is our comprehensive administrative policy and procedural manual. Again, chapters one through four and again, a lot of cleanup on names and titles. Um, we will remember the table contents uh when this is all said and done. Um, again, visions and values were changed as we discussed last time as far as governance, uh, the committee structure. Um, we added language, eliminated the finance administrative and outreach advocacy and then made it as the board suggested that under the direction of the president and conference by the board, um, you could have a committee that would be some over appointed, um, but it's not restrictive. Um, I did change uh board self evaluation, I just, originally it was every two to three years, I moved it every three to five years. I thought that was a more useful, that was what the board did when you know, my association practice trips and stuff, by the time the boards change and and what you got through the five is probably um a good place to be unless the board wants to put it to through. But that was a suggestion, uh, let's see. Highlights. Added in the whistleblowers that we had, that was added in, actually numbered in, so you see that presented. This is all the governance, right? I'm moving in the chapter four. Board meetings, there was one. It was one about employees and attendance um for discussion here at board meetings and I did modify.
So you included that discussion, that is part of this.
Yeah, it's, it was already in as part of a policy, let's see, three point O. Okay, under three point O one O three was entitled leadership team. And it identifies the individuals that are part of that team uh with their titles. Um, so that includes chief of police, education services manager, human resources manager, natural resources manager, land administration and operations manager, wildlife resources center manager. And then you have the executive team, which are your board directors, director of operations, planning and public safety director, administration and finance, director of marketing education and director of land preservation and natural resources, and then it says here throughout the year, members of the leadership team may be asked to attend meetings of the board trustees. Attendance will be at the discretion of their director and or executive director. It used to have language that said they were encouraged to attend all meetings of the board trustees. So basically what we've been doing and now that we've got transparency is that if the director and and likely the committee in the whole uh is the meetings and now they can zoom in, they don't have to be in attendance or whatever, if they have a topic on the subject tonight, like for example, those capital items and budget we're gonna get in here from planning for demolition of glacial park buildings, then they would be asked by their director or by myself depending on to be present. Um, and um, and that way, if there's not something that that requires their time or effort, that that they don't, they don't need to be here, so they can make that judgment, but that judgment would be at the discretion of their director or myself, right? And I think that's a fair way to to bring them in, I think what we've been doing with the agency showcases uh by the departments, that's been helpful. We want to make sure that the board knows our team, that our team is known that their value for the expertise that they provide in the subject area. And I I think the way we've been working through things right now, um, you know, we're gonna write next, um, but yes, what I mean, they don't need to be at, but but they're ready. So that's the proposal, so that's where it shows up here, it's at the discretion of the director.
That work for everybody?
It's it's item uh three point O one O three. And it's under employer organization structure and as I said, it used to say that these, you know, the leadership team is encouraged to attend all meetings of board trustees and so then when that changed, right, if they were encouraged, they were mandated, but it was that opening back, so now it's moved to attendance will be at the discretion of their director. So doesn't mean if they want to come, they can just zoom in? Or do they have to be asked by their director? So it's an open meeting and any employee, any member of the public can attack, they can zoom in. The question comes into is a compensated time and and a good example, so if they're, if they're asked to be present, then then they're asked to to be here, they're they're on the clock, it's compensable time. If someone was listening in and they're not, but then on the Zoom, for example, we call upon them because they happen to be there, it's hard to know, you know, are they on or not, and so I use the analogy of you have a staff member that's out at the grocery store and a resident, you know, asks you a question and you don't say, hey, I'm out, I'm off the clock right now, I can answer the question. Where you would politely, you know, you're gonna ask the question, does it take fifteen minutes, it's like half an hour a week? Do we reschedule and have a conversation next week and I'll call you on, you know, and so that's how you would do that and they would clock in. You know, they, I would assume if a question get asked to them, they would put down, I was, you know, asking whatever time a lot, but that would be worked out with the director. Um, again, our leadership team doesn't, that's not what they do, but I just, I think that's how it would be handled, right? But I want to make sure that if anybody's listening in and and they're representative of our staff, no different if you're out in the public, you're a representative, you're an ambassador of the organization and that means that you should be professional and and that would be contact whether you're on a clock or not, right? You're coming in. Does that work? Yeah, I'm finding that. And I think that pretty much wraps up.
I just have a, I have no questions first, well, I do have a question, but I won't go back, I won't go on, so two, two point O one point one two. We added in the Henry County Board Chairman of the county with the approval of the county board, so I would just take out the county. Well, that's ours, chairman of the, yeah, so I took that out, I'm sorry. So it says McHenry County Board Chairman of the county with the approval, I would just take out of the county, but and that's just that'd be a deal to talk that way. Um, I didn't have, under appointments, it's it's two point O one, point one. I can tell you that later.
So basically you just say it and clean it up.
I, just on that one, but that's the only one, that was, that was.
Is that just language, it's just that it's not.
Yeah, I'll check, I'll check, get the, the other one was, and I'm trying, I'm sorry, it's just, this is very confusing to go through this thing. Um, one was two point O one point one five G. And all I would say on that one is the best practice for timely customer services to get the citizen.
And all I would say on that one is the best practice for timely customer service is to get the citizen in direct contact with the appropriate staff member at the district or the executive director. And I think as trustees, it would, I'm assuming that this is geared more towards us. From our perspective, it would be really to you. I don't want to make, you know, in terms of time to determine who the staff member would be, but I guess it would just be, so for best practices from the board perspective, if we have an issue or it's going to become a public house. We wouldn't send it to, to say one of the directors, you know, we'd send it directly to you and you make the decision about where it should go.
Well, it depends. I mean, for example, let me use why, if something they're asking a question, it's about vacant programs. The executive director, I don't even know, you would directly to education or hunting program, sorry, to our team. But if it's a complaint of a very specific issue, of course, that complication, you're going to send it to, I think it's naturally.
That's the question I know who the answer is. I've just settled there.
Right, okay, all right.
That they're requesting, hey, we want to add, uh, you know, whatever, a new trail or a new park or site naming. I mean, obviously that complexity is not an easy customer service question that requires.
All right, no, that's perfect. So I wasn't sure if there was, like, we wanted a certain line of, and I don't get a lot of questions, so I. Okay.
Yeah, I think the key piece in communication in this is customer service. It's not, you're not directing staff. You just, these are their knowledge base. The best, easiest pathway is to get it.
Okay, and I think the other one I was thinking of, I think it's probably better handled in, just in a little board development. Thing anyway, so I think that's it for me.
Anyone else?
No.
All right. So are we ready to move on to? Okay, we're ready to move on to executive director's report.
All right, um, well, we have just a few items and I'll do, I won't overlap. As you have heard or haven't seen yet, but we'll get you out there. We do have Bison at Pleasant Valley. And, uh, again, a great job to, again, the, the vision of the board to, uh, move forward and go through that selection process to make that happen. To our land preservation, natural resources team and all the volunteers that used to, to put up the fencing and, and. The day was, uh, very successful. They postponed it because of the weather and then when it came out and it was a delight. And our marketing communications was there to support, um, and they took some video and footage and some they did put together behind scenes that is either up or should be going out.
It is up. Okay, it's adorable.
Yeah, there's a little cap too and, and what they were saying, uh, and so just kudos, but they, when they were boarding, they all boarded. They got more boarding than they actually anticipated. And, uh, so the six that we have, there'll be more that'll come in spring. But, um, we'll get you out there and, uh, it'll be something that everybody will, will enjoy. So again, that's a great, uh, great asset to help manage our ferry. Um, DEI focus groups were held yesterday with our consultants. Those have been going well. Feedback, I don't have the results of that yet, but again, took the work that was on survey results, met with the different groups of staff. Um, and we'll get them out on that. Um, again, I do want to shout out to, um, the team of John, Amy and Shawna that led the way in getting the American Rescue Plan Act grant together. Um, it was a massive undertaking, um, kind of like Frankenstein's monster of federal government, everybody pushing all these things together. And John and Shawna have been, Amy has been doing grants for quite some time, but they worked together and got it out the door. Um, thank you, um, and, uh, for those that assisted, uh, Lynn, I know particularly with Durbin's office, we were looking to get letters, not only from the federal, state, regional, uh, and, and your call, we were trying to get at the federal level, we got Underwood, we got Caston's, uh, uh, but we also got Durbin's office and that was due to you kind of pushing buttons. Again, I don't, we were trying to get all these letters of support and then all the villages and park districts in the area, um, that, that signed on, CNAF, et cetera. Um, we had a great, uh, great valley for this project. So we hope it's well, when we hear more, um, if there's appropriateness for phone calls or other things that we need. We actually got our, our local legislators to mail. They helped out with it. Um, so that was the federal grant and then Shawna is taking the lead on the state tourism grant. And she's finishing that up and that will likely either get out before the holidays or go in. Uh, we're getting back to the grant together. So that was only my high level of lots been going on and, um, and the budget work. And then a lot of team members over the holidays will be taking time off. Um, so if we need something, we are open sites. Um, we don't know, plenty of snow in there, snow for Christmas, maybe, but, uh, Merry Christmas.
Hey, anyone else have any other, you know, something to bring up this evening? Matt will go on to public comments too. Any public out there, Stephanie?
No, there is none.
Okay, thank you. We need to motion the owner executive session. Pat? There is, can you make motion? Okay. On favor, or I guess we'll call it. We're going to be able to roll call this. Okay, we'll, we'll call.
Just sit down?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so, so the motion is going, uh, pursuant to two C, two five pursuit purchase lease or real estate and two C, two one, review of post-session minutes and the other, of the open meetings act. Five I L C S. So anyway, that's, that's the motion made and seconded and approved. Uh, so we're going into executive. Anybody want a break for five minutes? So then we'll go right in. Get on there and, uh, we don't have any, uh, I don't think we have any thing to do when we come back. So this will be a roll call on adjournment. Executive session. We do. I heard if I took a run, I wonder what I would get into. If somebody let me in, I guess.
All right, seven forty.
No, I went back to, um, it's Tuesday, I'm waiting.
You're going a long way. Are we all in?
We're all in.
Okay, roll call.
Kristi Dayton?
Yeah.
Justy Dax?
Yes.
Kristy Campbell?
Here.
Yeah.
Kristy Thomas?
Yes.
Kristy Dunn?
Here.
Kristy May?
Here, all present. Uh, you have, you wanted to review this lottery as a.
Yes, so, um, we got a sample there. I had sent it out in advance. We had met with, uh, Energy Sustainable Solutions, uh, several weeks ago. I did share with them at that time that, um, because they inquired a letter of support and I shared our timing of our meetings. Uh, they did it in writing, then also requested that we present this. They had a, maybe the whole, I did not have time to listen to the comments meeting today, but, uh, it was on there and it's for voting action on Tuesday night and we have our board meeting. So, uh, under executive director's report, um, since they asked us to provide a letter of support, staff did prepare a letter to which we believe that we are comfortable with in sending, uh, to them that this would be something the board would want to do. Um, we selected, uh, you know, what we wrote very clearly. Obviously, the opportunity for, uh, clean, uh, renewable energy is something, um, that is something the district can support. Um, and we would send this off if there is conference, um, so they would have it to the board prior to the vote.
And the feeling is, is that when we work with them, they need work with us going forward. This is just, just some discussion points.
Yeah, they're going to be around. I mean, the district has property in the area. This is not on district property. Um, district nearby, um, I think with the very restoration work that they're proposing to do, um, there may be some efficiencies. We did ask them during the meeting that it would be great, you know, the district, um, could benefit, you know, through some funding to our foundation, a donation of seeds or, or whatever, that would be great. Um, they just, first, they have a foundation themselves, um, that gives grants about a thousand or so. So they're going to be here, uh, in the county, uh, for some time. Um, and I think building some good solid relationships with them.
They had an issue when we, no, you left it pretty loose, so.
I, I think it's well written.
Yeah.
Also, I took a stab. I think that this is what we wanted to do, so it was the most about for directing it and then I polished it. So he did a great job, but it, it said exactly what we thought it was.
Everybody's good with this being sent. Okay. All right, then I can put the motion to adjourn. Chris has the motion to adjourn and Ray has a second. Roll call.
Well, yes, Kristy Thomas, yes, Kristi Dayton. Dunn?
Yes. Yes, and we are adjourned. Andy?